Okay, Eric, ready in about two minutes?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 2024 Board Meeting for the Kitsap Regional Library Board of Trustees. I am President Eric Fong. Along with me are my board colleagues Marwan Cameron and Eric Sisney, Gina Steiner and Stephanie George. Both have excused absences. And I will, it is my job this week to read the Kitsap Regional Library Mission Statement, Inspiring Curiosity and Connection. I'll hand it off to Jason Driver for welcoming introductions. Please, Jason.
Yeah, good night and welcome. And we've got a short crowd tonight. We've got several excused absences. So I'm going to start across the room today. And Director of IT and Facilities Mike Rose is here. And then we've got the Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, Wendy Kyle. And then we've got the Director of Strategy and Communications, Jeanne Allen. And to my left, we have Executive Assistant Tammy Jeffries. And Excuser Dan Baer, Deputy Director of Finance and Chief Operating Officer. And also Excuses, the Director of HR and DEI, Lacretia Robertson. And lastly, excused is the Deputy Director of Public Services, Shannon Peterson, as well. Special guests in the house from Bainbridge Island. We have Adult Services Librarian extraordinaire Tressa Johnson, who will regale us with a report on community engagement with Bainbridge Island Senior Center. So happy to have Tressa in. Welcome, Tressa.
Thanks so much. Tressa and I go way back.
Yes, I know.
In my branch, so excited for this presentation. As far as additions or changes to the agenda, I suppose that we can call out that due to the absences of Shannon and Dan, those agenda items will stay on the agenda, but will be shared by you, Jason?
That's correct.
Great. Any other additions or changes to the agenda, team?
No.
Okay. There is no public comment. Just want to double confirm, Tammy. No public comment. Okay. And we will go to the Consent Agenda. All matters listed within the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the Consent Agenda and placed on the regular Agenda by request. We have 6.01, Minutes of the April 23, 2024 Regular Board Meeting; 6.02, Minutes of the May 3, 2024 Retreat; 6.03, Payment of April 2024 Bills; and 6.04, Surplus Library Materials Withdrawn from the Collection for April 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I shall move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And we will go to Agenda Item 7.01, Presentation: Partnerships Bainbridge Island Senior Center by Tressa Johnson. Tressa, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you for the invitation. And May is perfect timing. It is Older Americans Month. And as luck would have it, as luck would have it, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services has decided this year to highlight on the importance of connection in the lives of senior citizens. So that segues nicely into our mission to inspire curiosity and connection, as well as our strategic priorities. I was happy to see that. When I first went to graduate school, I fully expected to be on the road toward academic librarianship. But here I am. The more I heard about public librarianship, the place of the public library in a community, the support for civic engagement, and the longer I observed as Google convinced us all, wrongly, that everything is online and all we need to do is type it in that little white box, the more I thought, public librarianship is for me. So that's why I'm here. When I first got the invitation, I sat down and I wrote a long list of the programs and services, everything that I've done with the Bainbridge Island Senior Community Center. But in the end, I mean, it's just a list, nothing very exciting. So instead, I want to highlight four enduring programs that I have worked on with the Senior Community Center. And then hopefully, there's time, I'd like to mention a couple of services that do not have an online presence, or they simply, you know, one doesn't think of them as a service to even ask about. And having this relationship with the Senior Community Center has allowed me to forge relationships in which people can learn about these programs. So in 2011, I was introduced to the Senior Community Center as I inherited a book group from my predecessor. And a library book group is something special, right? So, you know, we don't live in the same neighborhood, we don't worship in the same place, our kids don't go to school together. What draws us together is that we want to read a book and then discuss it with other people. And so you end up with an interesting mix of folks, different political views, different social views, different life experiences. It can be something pretty unique. Early on, as the facilitator, I decided to start using name tags for everybody, which admittedly was because I was having trouble remembering everybody's names. But soon discovered that I was not the only one. There was, there was something special that happened when I started giving out name tags. It gave me an opportunity to approach first-time attendees, introduce myself, ask if I could make a name tag. And because we're all wearing the same name tag, they had no way of knowing that while this was their first visit, five people in the room had been attending for a decade and knew each other quite well. I mean, it ended up leveling the playing field a little bit. And it gave us the freedom to stop worrying about the possibility of forgetting someone's name and instead focus on what we wanted to talk about. Those name tags, I think, are part of the eventual growth of that group to over 20. Then with the pandemic, we shrunk quite a bit, but we still have probably 17 or 18 regular attendees at any given meeting 12 might attend. Silver Tech. This is a program that takes place twice a month during this school year, and it's a program that takes place with the Senior Community Center as well as Bainbridge Youth Services. So the Senior Center provides the seniors who have questions about their devices, and the Bainbridge Youth Services provides teens who are in need of volunteer hours for their National Honor Society membership. And I come in to match the skill of the teens with the questions that the seniors have. That program has become much more than I could have imagined. Again, I introduce name tags, which I just think we should all wear name tags all the time. For these teens who are, you know, they're transitioning from a world in which the adults had some amount of control over them, teachers or older family members, transitioning to where they are peers with their colleagues, with their professors, with everyone around them. For them to have this opportunity to sit down with a senior and be the person with the knowledge, or sometimes even not, they don't have the knowledge, this is interesting. I learned that, I first had thought, well, teens know a lot about technology, this is going to be perfect. In fact, more often than not, they can't answer the question that the senior has for them. But what they have, what they understand is the way, the way parts of technology is connected. So they, I think of it as scaffolding, like they have the scaffolding. So you tell them you want to get to the third floor, they aren't really sure how to get there, but they do know how to find out, right? That program, I think its success is illustrated by the fact that every year, there are more teens that volunteer for this opportunity. And in fact, some of the teens who are not in need of additional volunteer hours continue to attend. It is, it's something special. There's a podcast. So when the Senior Center has a regular podcast, when the pandemic shut everything down, within days, they had established a daily check-in via Zoom so that folks can see how we're doing. This was for members and for community, folks in the community. And that morphed into more of an informational program. So Reed, the Director of the Senior Center, would invite people from the community to come in and talk about their area of expertise. So I have, I'm a regular attendee, I'm a regular guest on the program. I'm there once a month to talk about everything library. So I've illustrated our, navigated our new website, talked about book kits, accessing the Kitsap Sun with our databases, through our databases. Right now, I am working on a series where I talk, every month, I talk about three topics very briefly. It's always the same topics. Privacy, privacy and technology, avoiding scams and information literacy. So they're short episodes, but I'm not sure how successful that will be. So far, it feels very successful to me, but time will tell. The Board of Trustees. I was invited to and voted into the Board of Trustees at the Senior Center. And this year, I'm acting as Secretary. Perfect for a librarian, organizing, governing documents, you know, all the details that are involved. The Senior Center is working on preparing for a capital campaign in maybe four years. So what I'm able to do is to, and what they're, what they're looking to me to do is help provide a really solid foundation in their organization. They're fairly new, 2017 they came to being. So we are, you know, establishing a solid foundation on which the Senior Center will be able to build not only the capital campaign, but into the future. So those are the four main enduring programs that I have worked on with the Senior Center and that have had, I think, a tremendous impact. And I want to mention five services, as I said, that either don't have an online presence or one wouldn't know to ask for them. We've all seen the ads for Medicare insurance on TV. We've gotten notices in the mail, emails, we've, you know, all kinds of things. Those are all for-profit insurance brokers. Not bad, but they are for-profit. And so they have a limited number of insurance plans that they can talk to you about. But we have, in the state of Washington, SHIBA, which is an acronym for Statewide Health Insurance Benefits Advisors. This is a program out of the Washington Office of the Insurance Commissioner. And these folks are trained, they're volunteers, trained by the state, to help you navigate Medicare. They'll help you figure out what your needs are with Medicare. They'll help you compare different programs, different insurance programs. They'll help you enroll, they'll even call Medicare on your behalf. I mean, it is such a fabulous program. So we've had, at the Bainbridge location this year, we have them come in every other month to just give an introduction to Medicare. And I have been really impressed. We've had groups of fairly large groups for something on that topic in the middle of the day. You all want to attend now, don't you? But to have 10 people attend a program like that is pretty significant. And in the fall, during open enrollment, which is October, December, we will be having drop-in one-on-ones so that you can sit in with one of these volunteers. It's free, it's unbiased, it's confidential, it's our tax dollars at work. The Washington Talking Book and Braille Library, you heard a little bit about that, I believe, from Liz Ochoa, my colleague in mobile services. They provide service, they provide access to audiobooks for folks who either can't read or are, don't have access to traditional print materials. So dyslexia, traumatic brain injury, Parkinson's, dementia, low vision, all of these people would qualify for this service. Now, Watabal, the Talking Book and Braille Library, is funded through state and federal dollars. Each state, in fact, has a Talking Book and Braille Library. And what makes it unique and worthwhile is that they have the ability to create audiobooks for titles that are not available commercially. The titles are available commercially, but the publisher has chosen not to produce an audiobook version. But these Talking Book and Braille Libraries are able to do that, and they work together through their federal arm to make it available to everyone across the country. Tax Aid. This is, in my opinion, one of our most important programs. People tend to think of this as an AARP program because it's typically referred to as AARP Tax Aid. It is, in fact, an IRS program. They develop training for the volunteers, and you're required to go through it annually. They have three exams that you are required to pass at 80% or above if you are going to volunteer. The IRS provides all of the materials that they need, the computers, the router, the printers, everything. And they also provide some quality control. Yep, they drop in on these sites to make sure that their volunteers are following protocol. The AARP coordinates all of the volunteers, equally important, but it really is an IRS program. And they serve people of all ages, all ages. The Hospital Equipment Lend Program, or HELP, this is run by the Knights of Columbus. If you have temporary need of some hospital equipment, they will, they will bring it to your front door. And when you're finished with it, they will come to your home and pick it up for you. It is a fabulous service. Finally, I want to talk about Kitsap's Accessible Community Advisory Committee, which is a mouthful. We have all seen in parking lots, the handicapped-only sign, that icon of the, you know, the blue sign with the wheelchair on it. And sometimes you even see, they'll make it explicit, fine, you get fined if you're going to park here. So what happens to that money? Where does it go? In the state of Washington, it goes into a pool. Every county in the state of Washington is able to create an Accessible Community Advisory Committee. That committee is composed of community members, and they can write proposals for projects that would increase the accessibility of their communities. So I was invited to sit on the Kitsap's Accessible Community Advisory Committee when it was first established. And there were a number of projects that we had successfully go through the process. One is mobile wheelchair ramps. So if you are having a party and one of your friends is unable to walk up the stairs to your front door, you can borrow a wheelchair ramp for free. The other, I think, notable program that we got started, or they got started, I was just part of the group, it was a group effort, is the availability of all-terrain off-road wheelchairs. And so this allows, gives people the opportunity to explore the wilderness in a way that they weren't able. So if you're in Kitsap County and you want to, you want to go out and explore the wilderness, you have a friend that could benefit from this, you can borrow it for free, thanks to this program. There's one final thing that I wanted to mention, and that is my deep love for adult services. And adult services, so we provide services for people in our community aged 20 through death, right? So 40 years, 50 years, 60, if you're lucky. So we are working with people through graduation, homeownership, marriage, parenthood, divorce, illness, immigration, trauma, Medicare, all of these transitions that we go through. And you know, as well as I do, that's a small sampling, right? But and through all of those transitions is the thread of civic engagement. So voting, understanding democracy as a process, paying taxes, being part of the community that we take care of each other, and government services, right? Knowing what government services are available and taking advantage of them, using them. I'm so glad I'm here. I do love this work. And thank you for inviting me so I could talk to you about it for just a few minutes. So if you have any questions or comments?
Thanks so much, Tressa. Really appreciate the presentation. Clearly, your passion shines. Any questions, folks? Questions, comments?
Well, I'd say, wow.
You do a lot. Inspirational.
Well, thank you. Thank you for making it possible.
I had to start taking notes. You're doing so many different things. Just first, it's a testament, one, everyone that comes up here month after month really shows the passion that they have for the work that you do. And I think that's also a testament to the leadership. We're seeing this repeatedly. Now, I was, I knew about the tax help, but this, there's a super list here of different things for seniors that is fantastic. We find ourselves in a time right now where folks are very divided, they're experiencing a lot of loneliness. And to have our youth connect with our seniors, I think is just a really powerful program. So I'm just super pumped to hear that. A question that I would have for you is, as ChatGPT and other things are coming online, what types of ideas do you have to kind of pull that in for seniors and also helping the youth to understand, you know, kind of like Google, as you were saying, that's not the end-all, be-all, you still have to check your facts, and the best place to do that is typically in a book?
That is a great question. Just, I think, two weeks ago, Google rolled out a new AI program where, you know, you type in a question, and we're familiar with, for a while, they've had, they'll have a list, and they'll give you a link to the website where they got the information. Well, now, AI is looking at a number of different websites and kind of picking and choosing and then putting it all together and hoping that it's correct, which, you can ask it, for example, "How do I keep cheese from sliding off my pizza?" And its answer will be, "Non-toxic glue." So in terms of what we can do, I'm still in a place where, you know, as a librarian, I'm working with, and I expect to be there myself, as technology changes drastically all the time, you know, trying to figure out how to, I'm working with folks who are trying to figure out how to download books and audio, "How do I, how do I keep my phone from going dark when I still want to use it?" And mostly, when it comes to AI, and particularly when it's in use on the internet, it is, you know, I wonder how to overcome that erroneous assumption that everything is available online. I'm just not sure how to get there, how to get away from that. I'll tell you, it's fun to, when you do get a question or you're able to turn someone on to information that they either were not able to find because it is online but not available through a Google search, or finding information that is not available online, but you can find out where it is using a Google search. Yeah, so it's a really great question, Marwan, and I'm glad you're already thinking about it.
Well, again, I appreciate everything that you're doing out there at the library. I love to see that.
Thank you.
Still everywhere, in and outside of the library. I have to talk about four of these things. This is one I spoke about, which I'm just very thankful that you're touching on the privacy of the scams for our students. That's even for us, it's not an offense, but it's in there. Lots of pushing, stealing, scams, and it's too easy to follow, right? Stay in our company and say, hey, this is what's new, what we're supposed to look out for. This is again, I have to take it from people.
Well, thank you. And I chose this series of, you know, touching on the same topics every time because I was feeling, as you say, we all, you know, it keeps coming at us. These are professionals, they're professional criminals, they're very good at it. And so to keep the topic open so, and so that we can talk about what, you know, what new scams are about, or just even normalize the talking about it, because there's a lot of shame over scams, and there's a lot of loss of privacy that we're not even aware of. So thank you for your support there. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. I think that, you know, we often talk about the lists of things, services that the library offers that the general public doesn't know about. And this is, there's a lot here to add to the list for me personally. I love everything that you shared. My mom goes to the Senior Center regularly, and I think she went to the Medicare program that you talked about because she came home one day and rattle off all sorts of things about Medicare, and she was talking about how she could save money. So that's a big deal, especially these days when everything's getting more expensive. So thank you for that and the connection, right? You are the conduit, you know, you're the facilitator, just connecting people to services and helping at a time where maybe change isn't so easy, right? I mean, I even saw you help one poor confused man last week use the printer. And so that was me. That was me. Didn't know how to use, didn't know how to use remote printing. And Tressa came up and was really patient, and just knowing that there's somewhere to turn, I think, is a wonderful thing. Two questions. First, one at a time. What would you say is the biggest win that you hear from patrons most frequently? I imagine it's a combination of like connection or realizing that they can now do something that they didn't think that they could do before. What are some of the more common wins that you hear from patrons? What are some of the more common wins that you hear from patrons?
Oh, thank you for asking. There are so many. I do think that that personal connection of looking someone in the eyes, of really paying attention to them is very important and makes them feel heard. Telling people that they have a, there's a courtesy $10 available to them for printing and copying, it's like their birthday. I mean, they're just so excited. They can't, "Really? Are you sure? I have a dime." "No, no, we can do that." It's those moments, I think, of surprise, surprise service, things that they don't anticipate. With the printer, I mean, we all, it should be easy. It should be easy, right? I feel like it should be easy. And it is not. It stumps me just about every day, and my colleagues. I mean, it is, so when you are able to, when you, part of your job is to help someone print a document, and sometimes it's very stressful, depending on the document, the timing. It is a gift, a human gift, that you don't get anywhere else. I don't think there is another setting in which a person's job is to sit down with them and teach them how to download books to their, to their phone, to their device. And to put people at ease that they're asking good questions, that they are not stupid, that this is difficult, so that it's always changing, it's not intuitive. None of it is intuitive. They are all learned skills. It's a steep learning curve. So all of those, all of those places are places that you can see people are pleased and surprised when they're treated with respect and with humanity.
Thank you. And I have one more question. What do you need to continue or expand the partnership?
No, I feel I have, I have really been given a gift. And that is the time at work to work with the senior community center in not only on their board, as secretary, but to be part of that community. I spend a lot of time on senior center work. And I'm really grateful for that time. So I can't think of something extra that I would need because I think I've been given, given the tools that I, the tool that I need, the main tool that I need, which is time. I will say that I can't do what I do without my colleagues and the branch, the other librarians, and probably more so the frontline staff, their circulation specialists, the folks who get books in your hands. They make it possible as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate the presentation. Anybody have any other questions, comments?
Well, I was a public service librarian, reference librarian for many years. And coming from you, what I'm getting from you is you really like to help people. And I think that's what libraries do. They want to help people, otherwise they wouldn't be doing this. So anyway, thank you. You're epitome, I think, of that. You really like to help people, it really comes across.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for those kind words, and thank you for your support as well. Thanks for your work.
Thank you, Tressa. Just wanted to say thank you. You totally exemplify what it means to be a librarian, having been a practicing librarian on both ends of the spectrum, the tiny tots and the older community. I just want to thank you for what you do. You really, I think, exude a sheer happiness when you are talking about your work with seniors. And, you know, I know you only touched on probably a scant 5% of the services are probably available for seniors, but you did a beautiful job of sort of encapsulating what the adult population needs post, you know, matriculation, right? You see them on one end of the spectrum when they're tiny tots and you're imparting early literacy skills. And then, you know, you deal with them as teens, and then they return with their young ones, and they come back to storytime. And then it's time for adulting 101. And what I'm hearing you talk about is like this phase that really happens in between sort of like parenthood and, you know, the rest of your life. There's a lot to figure out. Adulting is hard. And I think what you've shown is an ability to, and a sheer passion of doing what you do. It's all about the information, it's all about the human connections. And that's what we're really celebrating in these mission moments, our ability to be able to connect and engage with the community. And I really appreciate you. One of my first introductions to a community at Carroll was when you had me present to the senior center when it first started. And I've been thinking about that ever since. And hearing people talk about you and your work with them, and now actually having you talk about it, I'm not surprised, but it was a beautiful presentation, a very strong testament for the power of libraries. So thank you for being, you know, thank you for not going to academia and being a public librarian, because their loss is our gain. And just really appreciate you coming out and sharing your Tuesday evening with us.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tressa. Okay. With that, we will go to 7.02, Board Member Updates. I'll go first. And my main update was that Tressa helped me last week print out a whole bunch of paperwork. I was so confused, I didn't know what to do. And she was so patient. So, and then she told me she was presenting. So I was really looking forward to hearing the presentation today. I'll pass it over to Marwan and Eric.
I'm just looking forward to the summer learning program. My daughter and I look forward to that every year. And I think this is our third year of participating in it. So that's just an exciting time for us. And then just looking forward to Juneteenth, which is on June 15. And I know the library is always prominent there. And I think last year they had library cards. We had library cards that had Juneteenth colors on there. So I might get another one if they, if they're doing that again.
I agree with you about summer learning. I just picked up four of the booklets for my grandkids and daughter. So they're going to be reading a lot. Also, maybe mention the board retreat we had in early May with the assessor's office. That's where we get most of our taxes, and that was really informative. I was really glad to be able to talk to them.
Yeah, appreciate that, Eric. Thank you. I was there as well. That was, that was very informative to understand how our tax dollars work. I'll also pass it back to you, Eric, for 7.03, for the Finance Committee Report.
Well, there's not too much to say. Everything's going smoothly and revenue's coming in on target. So that's about what we hope for.
Thanks. And for 7.04, with Dan Bear being absent, I'll pass it over to Jason for the financial report.
Yes. So without Mr. Bear here, Dan, Bear's report will stand as written. To note, just to follow up on Eric, Sizney, finances are trending normally. Revenues and expenditures are tracking normally. You do have an attachment of the 2023 annual report. That was filed last month with the state auditor's office. No surprises there as per RCW 43.09, 0.230. We are obligated to file that report every year, and that has come through clear. And so the library is on target.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions? Okay. With that, we will go to 7.05. Back to Jason for the Library Director's Report.
Right back at me. Yeah, April, we were very much focused on operations as a team. And we are really just going about the business of being a library. As you know, last year, we had a lot of, really the past two years, I think, since I started, we've had lots of, you know, changes. And this year, we are very much, my goal for us as a system is just back to the basics, getting back to just serving the public. Like, you know, Tressa's presentation, this is what we do and we do well. So really just focusing and honing in on how we do that and making sure operations are where we need them to be. So with so many changes afoot, it's been really beautiful to get back to the basics of what service looks like in a library. And so we're still very much normalizing our operations post-pandemic, filling staffing holes in the organization. April, we onboarded six new staff members, including the rehire of Ashley Oaksmith, who you last remembered being the manager of the Silverdale Library when we transitioned to a new beautiful facility. And Ashley left us to pursue some other passions, but then rejoined the library last month or this, two weeks ago, as the manager of the Sylvan and Mobile Services. So we're welcoming home Ashley. We had one staff member promoted from a substitute position to a full-time position in collection and technical services. And then we saw a couple of staff members leave to the organization to pursue other career opportunities. And so we're happy, you know, we've got some folks moving around. We've got some folks being able to take on vacancies from other staff who've left. That's really important to have staff be able to be provided opportunities when other staff leave. And then we're also excited to see, you know, staff, we have a lot of staff whose first time working in a library has really been their first time having a job. So, you know, in a lot of ways, to see people gain skill sets and leave the organization, while you never really want them to leave, you know, people do leave, you know? I'm a testament to that. I left an organization and came to another organization. But what I like to say is I like to build people up while they're at an organization because you never know when they're going to have an opportunity to represent that organization in public and/or go to another job. And I feel like when you go to another job, very much you are a representation of the places you've come before that. So it's been, you know, while disappointing to see staff move on, it's been refreshing to see staff get other opportunities and also bring in new staff members. We had Library Workers' Day in April, and so I'll get to that in a minute. But we, April was also a celebration of library pets. And so part of wellness was having staff share all of their furry friends. Jeannie's walking through those pictures now. We were able to kind of, I put those in a board report, I thought it was neat. I mean, wellness, part of wellness is, right? It's our pets. Studies have shown the health benefits that pets have. And so while staff were doing that all month, we were preparing to celebrate our people who were celebrating our pets. So for April 9, we celebrated National Library Workers' Day, and our staff split up and hit all nine of our locations, all of our teams. And we dropped off goodies for our staff for the day. Really want to thank the foundation for their support and adventure, and thank all of our staff, or leadership, rather, to go out and kind of trek over to branches and take snack packs and banners to hang up and to spend a little bit of time with staff. So knowing that one day and the one gesture is not enough to show staff how much we appreciate them, but at least for that one day of the year, I'm happy that we were able to go out and just be a presence and not focus in on meetings and stuff that day, just to be with staff. So I'm really proud that our leadership team has come together and been able to do that. And hopefully, we can do more of that. We certainly will celebrate with our staff at the end of the summer when we do our second annual staff barbecue, which we'll be doing at Sylvan again. And so stay tuned for that. But I just really want to thank our library staff, who play a critical role in meeting the needs of our community, again, as you've heard firsthand today. And so they do it, and they do it well. And so this is why we go all out for them, because you've heard of how they go about their business. And so we're happy about that. And so, as you know, five months into the Thrive Ahead, which is our strategic framework for the future, we have been busy aligning all of our organizational priorities to our strategic vision. As stated in months ago, our goal is to make sure we're fully aligned to our strategic framework. That means any missives, any new programs, any new things that come out should be aligned. And so I'm going to hold us to that. And so part of that, though, is operationally anticipating what the needs are. So part of what we've been doing is part of our goal for Thrive Ahead was really a future document. We want it to not only memorialize what we do as a library and really state it plain and clear. Like, let's face, the strategic plan does not set forth any newness in terms of what we do. It underscores what our value is to the community, but it also gives us a blueprint for how we're going to stabilize and be able to continue to do the things that Tressa's doing, right? Because as long as she's sitting here, I'm going to keep saying her name and embarrassing her and talk about the great work she's doing. But really, no, it helps to have someone who's actually here to talk about the work they're doing and how we want that stuff to continue. How does that stuff continue 10 years down the line? And so let's use that as an example. I mean, an organization, again, does not take into consideration an assessment of its assets and liabilities. So, you know, stock and trade of what it has is an organization that's doomed to fail. We cannot rely on the fact that we've, you know, we're a junior taxing district. We know we're going to get, you know, an amount every year. But is that amount enough to keep up with changing demands of what it means to be a library patron, for instance? Library patrons want their library services in different ways, and we're adept at and attuned at providing them in multiple ways, whether it's, you know, old-fashioned outreach at an event, whether it's actually providing a suite of digital resources, whether it's taking materials out in our mobile vans, whether it's having a telescope on my deck and looking out over the stars because we've got a clear day and I want to use that. There are multiple ways we can impart library services. So how are we going to do that in the future? So I think one of the ways we've gotten here is to be prudent about our finances. So one of the things we're looking at as an organization is not waiting for the finances to fall behind, as we did in 2017, 2018. We're in a pretty precarious place where we had to really make some important decisions on where we're going to be. We're kind of at that place again. We're at a jumping off point. We're not at a critical juncture. I want us to be at a place where we're not critical. So one of the things we've been doing as a leadership team, and we've broken ourselves up, and we've actually, we're considering the prospects of levying, going out for a ballot measure in order to make sure our finances are stabilized over time and that we can be able to provide the services that we need to to our community. And we can retain and recruit and keep good people like Tressa. Because without them, we're nothing. Without the library workers that are going out doing this stuff, they don't know who I am, Jeannie, Wendy, Mike, Dan, Lacretia, Shannon, Tammy. They don't know who we are, right? They knew, they know the Tressas of the world, right? They know the, her colleague, John. They know people like that because they see them every day. And so how are we going to stabilize ourselves? So anticipating that new construction revenues will eventually fall off, anticipating that the trending for finances to track where they've been tracking, which is costing-wise, everything is going up, we're going to put ourselves in a position where we will be looking at, we're right now looking at use trends, we're looking at demographics, we're looking at needs. And we're looking at our accounting. We're undertaking a full needs assessment of what this county needs and how that looks, and how we're going to be able to provide that. You know, libraries, schools, emergency services, roads, all that stuff, they're staples for healthy communities. And so realizing that, we, our library attendance has been pretty robust of late. We've sort of rebounded since the pandemic. If you look at a snippet of statistics, and statistics, there's a lot more to read in that. Overarching sort of analysis, we know that use has been spread out, right? And so traditionally, I think, libraries as a whole, in-house circulation has tended to trend down, but then digital circulation has trended up. That means circulation overall is trending up. In-house branch visitorship is back up, and use of in-branch things, like the printing services. You're a testament to that. Those are up almost 15%. Book locker usage at Pulse Bow is up about 80%. Mobile delivery is up 12 or 13%. And so how do we keep up with that? You know, you never want to start a service and not be able to keep up with it. How do we maintain all the touch points to sustain the library services that we have for years to come? And so what that looks like right now is that we are, we're taking assessment of everything, including our physical spaces. You know, knowing that Sylvan Way, our home library, is pretty much the nerve center of our organization. And we've put a couple million into that facility over the last couple of years. If Sylvan is rendered uninhabitable for any sort of reason, we're not able to maintain consistently library services throughout the county. And so looking at a building that's 50, 60 years old, that's falling apart, literally, what do we do about that? And how do we mobilize down the line for years on? And so lots of critical decisions are being made now, and lots of critical conversations are being had about what is our future. And so, again, it's not easy work. It's probably some of the hardest work I've had to do, along with digging in with this team on figuring out where we're going to be and how we're going to do it. Obviously, we've had a retreat with the board. We'll have, all of our retreats this year are being spent on just that, future planning. And so while staff are getting back to the basics, we are trying to dig into future planning and trying to lift up staff who are actually doing the work on a day-to-day basis of exemplifying basis of exemplifying our strategic plan. And so saying all that to say that that's what the organization is planning. I don't think it's any secret. We've put it in our strategic plan. We've put it in our 2023 annual report. But just really wanting the board to understand that in doing this, we hope to make the library accessible to everyone. And this is really about sustainability, accessibility, and really it's, it's about future thinking so that, you know, again, some of these great stories that you're hearing on a monthly basis, I want those to continue. And I'm going to sound like a broker record, but I'm going to say this in the end of, end of my talk here. One of the things that I haven't said enough is me as a library director, I'm passionate about serving the underserved. So there's all the populations of underserved. I won't go into detail about that, but some of those are senior populations, right? Senior populations often get forgotten about because they're seniors. I'm, I was half in jest, right? I am approaching senior status. I think we all are, right? And so what do their services look like? Are they robust enough? Are we meeting the demands of, and demographically, where does this county trend? I'll tell you, more for seniors than it does for the, the little ones. And so where, who are we really meeting the demands here? Which communities? We have to meet all of them. But understanding those demographics, hearing those stories, visiting libraries, having those anecdotes, reading the comment cards that come into my office every month, those are important because those help really inform where we're going to be as a library system. And so we want to make the library accessible to everyone. We're excited about providing a library that is going to be a future, going to continue to do the things it's done for this county for generations to come. So my last thing is future-proof. That's what I'm trying to make the library, future-proof in that whatever happens financially, whatever happens societally, whatever happens socially, we're able to withstand all that. And libraries have done a good job of doing that over the years. But again, not wanting to rest on our laurels and saying, because it's been here and because we survived 2017, we'll survive now. That's foolish thinking. And so we're really dug into providing a stable library for the future. And so the rest of this year will really be spent on what those plans will look like for balloting the county and making sure that we have a clear message. And we're also, you know, taking that out to our staff and wanting them to get eyes on that and help us to continually inform what our messages will be because they are in the many communities that we'll be in. And so those are our plans. April has really been spent just that, planning. And so that's my report for this month. That's all I have. I don't think I missed anything. Any questions for me?
Yeah, thank you, Jason. Appreciate the explanation and appreciate the background on, you know, the finances. And certainly I always am very inspired by whenever you share your vision and the leadership team's vision of, of the library. And, you know, librarian's work is never done. A library never stops evolving, right? A library needs to evolve to meet the services that are needed by its, by its patrons, right? And so I think that's, as we, as we future-proof, that's always something to consider, right? Is the library is always growing and evolving and changing. And especially in an area as innovative as, as this area, that's, that's always an interesting challenge. And I appreciate you sharing your, your vision as well as your, you know, responsibility to, to the taxpayers and the patrons as well. Anybody have any questions, comments for Jason's?
I just wanted to say that I appreciate providing the stats year over year and showing the growth. It's quite significant. You didn't talk about program attendance, but 110% is, that's, that's huge. That's a big deal.
Well, by virtue of having more programs, yes. And it doesn't always play out that way. Obviously, you can have programs if people not show up. But I think it's a testament to the work that all of our staff really put in. I mean, communications has to, has to do the work of, first of all, staff have to identify they're having a program. Communications has to build the programming advertisements to be able to go out. But not only that, you've got to get the people in the door and make it engaging enough for them to come back. And so my experience of doing programs is if you do them right, more people show up each time. Our first storytime ever, I had one kid and one parent, and I thought, this is a failure. I'm, I can't do this. And months later, and when I finally left that position, I had 20 kids, you know, 15 parents, and I had to close it off because, you know, it was that popular. But yeah, program numbers are, are up too. People are flocking into our libraries to attend the programs and to be a part of community too. And it's not only just us doing programs. They're here to use our meeting spaces. They're there. And when, I'm sure Tressa can talk about the faded day, the internet went down in Bainbridge last week when everybody flocked where? To the library. Because where else are you going to go for free services when you've got a, internet goes out in the middle of the day and you're working from home and you got to get that thing in by 5:00? Where are you going to go? Library. But yes, thank you. I think I cut you off giving me feedback, so sorry.
Yeah. And another thing that I'll add on that is even if a program's not well, well-attended, I wouldn't consider that a failure. I would consider that, I would consider that something worth celebrating because you gave your staff trust to try something new. And I think in an environment like this, it's important to be able to try something new. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. Maybe it's the wrong time. Maybe it was a bad day. But the fact that you trust your staff and, you know, the branch managers trust the staff and the staff supports each other to be able to try things like that in the, in, you know, I've, I've, I've been in a lot of innovative companies and you're, you're not allowed to try things like that, right? So I think that that's, that's great that you allow your staff to do that and the staff supports each other in doing that. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate the update. We will go to 9.01. We'll go right back to you because Shannon is out today. So we'll go to Jason for the Standards for Patron Conduct Library Policy Revision.
Yeah. So we presented this to the trustees last month. We were making an amendment in the Standards for Patron Conduct, given that there is a new law that has been passed, which is, and now RCW 9-41-30, open carry firearms and weapons are banned from library property. And so, and it really is any weapon of any kind that is banned. And so obviously, we're putting that particular RCW in the Standards for Patron Conduct because it's, it's a law. We have to follow it. And so we have amended that and we've notified our union partners and we've also amended our staff instructions per this RCW. And so really wanting staff to understand it's not their obligation to track down and, and help remove said weapon from a person. So really, you know, in, in giving staff the, the tools, necessary tools to be able to deal with any situations where we might encounter someone violating this particular RCW. And it, it's the same as, as we've always had. We wouldn't expect staff, A, to approach anybody with a weapon if they felt comfortable. Context is everything. If, if, if Mr. Eric always comes in to use a printer and you know Mr. Eric and he also gardens on a Saturday and he has a little garden hatchet, right, that's Mr. Eric. He gardens all the time. We're gonna tell Mr. Eric weapons are probably not permitted, but understand Mr. Eric is probably not going to go on a rampage. But if it's, you know, Mr. Jason with a sawed-off shotgun and it's, it's, you know, that's probably not a place where Mr. Jason should be with the sawed-off shotgun. It's a little more nuanced than that, obviously, but the important point is giving staff clarity and, and making this known. And what will follow is window clings, obviously, and making sure that all of our messaging and signage is reflected is going to be important. So working with our communications team to be able to make sure we have relevant signage to reflect the new RCW. And so having said that, we have updated our patron code of conduct. And all of us libraries in Washington are grappling with this particular RCW and making the necessary adjustments. Any questions?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Jason. Appreciate, appreciate the nuance of it and that it's, it's, it's being added to comply with state law. It's not anything that we're generating.
No, we're not generating it. It's a response to state law and libraries are included in this particular state law now. And so we have to follow suit.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. Any questions, comments? Or do I have a motion to approve the revision to RCW 9.41.300?
I think it's pretty understandable and necessary and common sense. So I'm moved to approve it.
I will second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much, gentlemen. And we will go to Agenda Item 10, Housekeeping. Future meeting date. Our next meeting is the last Tuesday of June, June 25, 2024. We will have our Long Range Strategic Planning Committee meeting ahead of the monthly meeting. And dates to remember, you can check out our webpage for any future dates. And with that, I appreciate everybody's time tonight. We are adjourned.